Supervisor Galvin.
Here.
Supervisor Hickman.
Here.
Supervisor Gallardo.
Here.
And Chairman Gates is on the phone.
Here.
Thank you.
Great to hear you and great to hear, see Steve. So this brings us to the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. So Supervisor Gallardo, if you could please introduce your guest and lead us in the invocation and pledge today. Supervisor Gallardo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I apologize for not being able to be there in person. It's been one of those mornings, but nonetheless, I'm glad to be able to be virtually. I do have a special guest and I'd like to say a few words after the invocation and the pledge. With us this morning is Betha Afagon. She's Executive Director of Promise Arizona. Betha, are you on the line?
Yes.
Oh, thank you for joining us and you can move forward.
Thank you and good morning and members of the Maricopa County Board of Supervisors. Thank you for this privilege to be here with you this morning. We're going to bow our heads in prayer and we also will stand for our pledge of allegiance. So shall we pray? Let us give thanks and praise for our blessings and for solidarity and courage to work tirelessly towards justice, to find and implement solutions for the many needs that confront our community. We pray for strength to endure difficult times and uncertainty in our lives with a pandemic, the war in Ukraine, and the widespread homelessness here at home. We lift up in prayer and thanksgiving our Maricopa County Board of Supervisors as they continue to lead our country, county through difficult times. In faith, we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Have a blessed meeting. Thank you Supervisor.
Thank you, Betha. Mr. Chairman, before Betha leaves us, I just want to, one, give her a big thank you for joining us this morning and getting us going, but even more importantly, her hard work and dedication to our county, our community, our families. Betha is a pillar within the Latino community. She has been on the forefront of many battles politically and, and community type fights. She has been the one person that will bring everyone together under one umbrella, under one mission and tackle it. Let it be being on the forefront of political hot potatoes like Senate Bill 1070 and even more recently, our pandemic. When our community was hit the hardest with, with rising numbers in, in some of the zip codes in, in our neighborhoods, she was one of the first ones that stepped up, grabbed some volunteers and they went out door to door with, with iPads, registering people to get tested and to get vaccinated. She is now currently working on, on a healthcare initiative, trying to get many of our families who struggle with just basic healthcare needs, she's getting them taken care of. Beth, I can't say more about Betha. Everyone knows Betha Afagon. And if you're out in the community and you're doing good things, you know who Betha is. She, she has always one that's just been a trooper and I couldn't be more happier to have her here today and even more happier to call her a friend. So thank you, Betha, for being here this morning and best wishes to all the initiatives. You know, I'm here anytime you need me to help and God bless. Thank you, Betha.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much for joining us today. We'll now move on to item number four, which is the pet showcase by Maricopa County Animal Care and Control. So I will introduce Hannah and Hannah, I'm looking for you to introduce the star of today's pet showcase, which is Clara.
Hi, good morning.
Morning.
I am here with my good friend Clara. Hopefully you can see she's behind me. She's working on a nice enrichment snack. She's about a six-year-old, six years old. She's a beautiful brindle color. We think she's a boxer. She actually came to us in February, right around Valentine's Day. So if that seems like a really long time ago to you, you can only imagine what that feels like to her. She's a really, really mellow and easygoing dog. She walked right into my office and plopped right down on that bed, that bed right there and she hasn't made a peep other than a few snores. I would definitely recommend her to anyone who wants a couch potato buddy for lounging around, watching television, but she is very cuddly. So just be advised that she will very likely help herself up onto your couch and bed. She's also really easy to take on walks and I personally think she must have had training in the past because she's really excellent on a leash and always walks right next to her handler. A couple of staff members have noticed that when they sit down on a bench outside, she will hop right up and sit next to you rather than at your feet. She knows sit and shake and she's just a low-key, low-maintenance girl, but guaranteed to come with high levels of love and affection.
That's great. Now that is two straight meetings where you have put couch potatoes that are dogs that are just happy to lay around behind you. So that does not look like my sister's boxer at all. We don't, I don't think they've ever had a picture of that dog sitting down. So good job, good job on that Hannah. Thanks for joining us and featuring what we have at the shelter. So thank you for joining us today.
Thanks for having me.
Okay, Madam Clerk, are there any announcements or corrections to the agenda?
Supervisors, Chairman, this morning I have one announcement on page 13, item number 16, the luxury storage RV and boat agenda item is being continued to the April 20th meeting. That is all I have for today.
Okay, thank you. Very good. Well then, when I get there, I'll try to remember that it's already been continued. We don't have to take a vote for continuance.
You will.
We will, okay. Okay. You're solid over there. Okay, thank you for that. All right, then we will move to planning and development, items five through eight. Assurance agreements and resolutions for Zanhero Trails subdivisions as listed in the agenda. The board will now consider items five through eight.
Mr. Vice Chair, I move to approve items five through eight.
Thank you Supervisor Galvin, do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Now, under planning and zoning here, he's under the consent agenda nine through 13, Zanhero Trails parcels is listed in the agenda. Item 14 is 4202 and 4150, West Sunland Avenue. And number 15 is Harquahela Sun. Madam Clerk, are there any registered speakers or comments received on items nine through 15?
Supervisors, Chairman, we received three in favor for item number 15. Keith Nitzer is registered to speak only if necessary. Matt Garlandhouse registered his position only in favor. And Garrett Bean is also available to speak only if necessary in favor.
Great, thank you. Looking for a motion.
Oh, Mr. Vice Chair, I move to approve items nine through 15.
Thank you Supervisor Galvin.
Second.
Thank you Supervisor. We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
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 All against? Hearing none, motion carries. So item number 16, as stated by our clerk, this item is being looked to continue to the April 20th meeting. This is the number 16 luxury storage RV and boat. Looking for a motion for continuance.
Mr. Vice Chair, I move we continue item number 16.
Thank you, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Great, we have a second. All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Under statutory hearings, clerk of the board, number 17 liquor license application A is location transfer for Circle K store number 9549. Number 18 is public service franchise, Arizona Public Service. Madam Clerk, are there any registered speakers or comments received on items 17 and 18?
We received one speaker, Mark Whitmire, on item number 17 in favor and he is available to speak only if necessary.
Okay. I'll look for a motion.
Mr. Vice Chairman, I move for approval of items 17 and 18.
Second.
Thank you Supervisors. I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Thanks for joining us today. Still under statutory hearings, transportation number 19, patent easement abandonment road file number PAB-0178. Madam Clerk, are there any registered speakers or comments received on items, on item 19?
Chairman Supervisors, we have one speaker in person, Laurel Richmond, in favor and she's available to speak only if necessary.
Well, thank you for joining us today. We'll find out. The, the, looking for a motion?
Mr. Vice Chair, I move to approve item 19.
Great.
Second.
And a second. Thank you both. I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Great, thank you. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you for joining us today. Still under statutory hearings, under transportation, 20 to 21, patent easement abandonment road files, PAB-0189 and PAB-0184. Madam Clerk, are there any registered speakers or comments received on items 20 and 21?
None were received for items 20 and 21.
Thank you Juanita. The board will now consider items 20 and 21.
Mr. Vice Chair, I move approval of items 20 and 21.
Second.
Great, we have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Under county officers, clerk of the board, 22 through 23, special event licenses for Wild Arizona, school superintendent, 24, 2022 Title III Consortium Grant from Arizona Department of Education. And item 25 is Title I Delinquent LEA Grant from the Arizona Department of Education. The board will now consider items 22 through 25.
Mr. Vice Chair, I move to approve items 22 through 25.
Thank, thank you Supervisor Galvin, do I have a second? Second, thank you Supervisor Sellers. I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Under sheriff, 26, disposal of laundry equipment for credit. 27, non-cash donations. 28, polygraph chair disposal, disposal by donation. And 29, IGA with City of Phoenix. The board will now consider items 26 through 29.
Mr. Chairman, I'm, Mr. Vice Chairman, I move approval of items 26 through 29.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. You guys are really rubbing in that Vice Chairman. Maybe I should just. You hear that? You hear that Bill?
Really, really some great guys on this board.
I called you chairman though Clint.
Yeah, thank you Steve.
Oh, it's a west side thing.
Exactly, west side rules right now.
Okay, then you make all the motions.
But, all kidding aside, thank you very much and I'm happy to call you Mr. Chairman for filling in and serving on the diet today. I'm really grateful for that.
Hey, you're, you're very welcome Bill and I'm, I've always considered it being a privilege that I've been your vice chairman twice now. So I appreciate that. Judicial branch, juvenile probation number 30 grant from Administrative Office of the Courts for Family Counseling. The board will now consider item number 30.
Mr. Acting Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I move for approval of item number 30.
Thank you Supervisor Sellers. Do I have a second?
Second.
And a second, thank you Tom. I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Under county management, Assistant County Manager Leanne Bone, number 31, is an American Rescue Plan Act expenditure approval and budget adjustments. So again, and again, Leanne, this, as these come up, it just looks, it's just a lot of hard work that you've been doing for these last two years. So thank you for everything you, you and your staff has put towards us. It's really comforting to know the backup that you guys have done, the decisions that have made and all on paper. So I appreciate it very much. So with that, I think you probably know my vote, but go, go ahead. I'm looking for a motion in a second.
I move to approve item number 31.
Thank you Tom.
I will second with a comment.
Great.
You know, I, I too want to thank Leanne for all the work her and her group have done. She makes all of us look good in the way she's handled all these funds and the support she's given for our communities. So thank you so much.
And before I call it for a vote, also just leadership is so important. So Joy, thank you. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Under county offices, Animal Care and Control, 32 through 43, New Hope Agreements, which we see listed on the agenda, number 44, Sheltering Agreement and IGA with the Town of Carefree for Animal Services. The board will now consider items 32 through 44.
Mr. Vice Chair, I move to approve items 32 through 44.
Thank you, Mr. Galvin. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Thank you Supervisor Sellers. We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you Bill. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Under elections, number 45, precinct committeemen. The board will now consider item number 45.
I have a.
Oh, you have a speaker card in? One, one moment please.
No, 45.
Okay, sorry, you marked 46.
Do you want to come in for 45?
Yeah.
Okay. We'll mark out number 46. Welcome. Please state your name for the record.
William Charles Blue Crowley III and a resident of Maricopa County.
Thank you.
On this precinct committee thing, it's the appointments that you're making and in the process, it was yesterday that anybody that wanted to be a precinct committeeman had to have all of their petitions filled out because there are two types of precinct committeemen, the ones that you appoint and the ones that are elected. Now, I'm going to be applying for a writing because it is important to me to be an elected precinct committeeman because with, I know with the Democrats, if you're going to participate as a voting member in the county or state conventions, if you're appointed, you get to sit there and watch, but if you're elected, you get to participate. So I'm trying to say thank you that part of the system works this way and I would go off on other things about elections, but hey, thank you guys for being here and doing what you've done. And I'll see you at public comment. If you do it before, I have to head over to RPTA.
Well, we will try to get to public comment quickly, Blue. So thank you, then thank you for joining us today. Thank you for your words. Okay, with that, the board will now consider item number 45.
I move approval of item number 45.
Thank you Supervisor Sellers.
Second.
Thank you Supervisor Galvin. I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed?
No.
Thank you. That is four to one, motion passes. Under emergency management, number 46, Maricopa County Emergency Operations Plan, number 47, IGA with securing the city's jurisdictional partners. Number, under finance, 48 through 49, resolution to apply for tribal gaming funds from Fort McDowell Yavapai Nation and Hala River Indian Community. Number 50, funds transfers and warrants. Number 51, budget adjustment for law enforcement officer market study. Under human resources, number 52, amend premium pay rates. Number 53, amend nurse retention incentive. The board will now consider items 46 through 53.
Mr. Vice Chair, I move to approve items 46 through 53.
Thank you Supervisor Galvin. Do I have a second?
Second, I'd like to make a comment.
Thank you Supervisor Sellers, please.
On item number 46, I'd just like to thank Robert Rowley for his hard work on the Emergency Operations Plan. Gosh, what a difficult job he's had over the last couple of years. A few years ago, not many of us knew how important it was to adopt and implement an emergency plan. We now know it is critical to this county and every resident who lives here, so thank you, Robert.
Thank you for those words, Jack. You lived it, didn't you? Okay. We do have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Under, under human services, 54 through 60, amend agreements with Housing for Hope, Save the Family Foundation of Arizona, Human Services Campus, Native American Connections, A New Leaf, Diocesan Council for the Society of St. Vincent de Paul, Central Arizona Shelter Services. Item 61 is an IGA with the City of Surprise for ARPA funds and item 62 is assignment of U.S. Department of Treasury Emergency Rental Assistance Funds. The board will now consider items 54 through 62.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move approval of items 54 through 62.
Thank you, Jack.
Second.
And a second, thank you Tom. We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Under medical examiner, number 63, agreement with Arizona Department of Transportation under procurement services, number 64, Maricopa County Administration Restack Change Order Number 5. 65, affordable housing development opportunities contract with Salt River Flats LLC. The board will now consider items 63 through 65.
Mr. Vice Chair, I move to approve items 63 through 65.
Thank you Supervisor Galvin. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you Supervisor Sellers. We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Public health, 66 through 67, amend an agreement with an IGA with Wesley Community Center, Arizona Board of Regents. 68 is an IGA with the City of Phoenix. 69 is grant funds from National Association of County and City Health Officials. Number 70 is fee fund budget appropriation adjustments. 71 is grant renewal agreement with Arizona Early Childhood Development and Health Board. 72 is a purchase order for grant award with ADHS. Number 73 is an extension to public crisis response IGA with ADHS. The board will now consider items 66 through 73. Do I hear a motion? Sorry, sorry, Jack.
Mr. Vice Chair, I move approval of item 66 through 73.
Thank you, Jack. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Tom. I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Hearing none, motion carries. Let's see here. Under real estate, number 74, lease termination with the Bureau of Land Management. Under transportation, 75, IGA with the City of Chandler. Number 76, change in traffic control on 56th Street. 77 is new traffic controls on Deer Valley Road. I've asked to take off item number 78 to consider it separately already for the agenda. Number 79, easement, uh, row and relocation assistance documents.
Mr. Vice Chair, I move to approve items 74 through 77 and 79.
Great, thank you Supervisor Galvin. Do I have a second?
Second.
And a second, thank you Supervisor Sellers. Motion in a second. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. We will go back to item number 78. 78 is the, the cell, under transportation, cell of McDott Parcel, X0260 dash EX2, Estrella Roadway Phase 2. So I'm asking, something came up to, to my office yesterday, and I, I felt that I need to have Alex Smith, representing our real estate division, come up. So thank you for being here today, Alex. So thank you. I think, Alex, you're aware, my office contacted you yesterday, so thank you for joining us today, and I just thought, well, maybe, let's just ask the questions that, that I had out, out in the open, we're voting on it, so this seems to be a little bit of an issue, so I wanted to just get the exact, you know, answers to my, my questions. I am assuming that all the legal notices were correct, and we followed the statute. Is that true?
That is correct, sir.
Okay. Was the property properly posted?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Has the county attorney's office looked at this issue?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, I feel like I'm grilling you. I, I don't mean to grill you. I don't mean to grill you, it's just it came up and I just thought, if we're gonna be out in public and, and voting on something like this, what was the county attorney's office recommendation about moving forward with the transaction?
To move forward with the transaction, the successful bidder attended the auction and followed all the necessary procedures. The PSA has been executed, the deed's ready to go, and we discussed the matter with the Maricopa County Attorney's Office, and they suggested to move forward.
Okay. Now, sometimes, the statutes about signage and, and posting for public consumption, this, just a quick question, the sign that was posted at the, on the, at the, the parcel, I guess, was that posted clearly for, for everyone to see, and for what length of, of time was that posted?
Approximately three weeks, sir.
Three weeks?
It was posted clearly for, you could see it from the driveway.
Okay. Well, that's, that's all I needed. I, I just, we're, we're constantly making sure that, with a county attorney's office, making sure that we're operating within the statutes, making sure that we're, we're trying to do everything right. We are, we are doing our best also to be a customer service organization, the, the best that we can. We hear it a lot. I hear it from other municipalities, how well the county does when it comes to, when it comes to partnerships or, or transactions and things like that, that, that we do our best, but we also know that when, when it comes to customer service, we expect and we, and we hope that our people do the absolute best they can, but also stay within the guidelines of their jobs, and, and I hope, I hope that that was met, but if everything has gone towards statute, to statute, and everything was done properly, this is where we're at today. So I appreciate you, I appreciate you coming here, getting under the lights, so I can ask those questions of you, Alex, and welcome to the county.
Thank you, sir.
Again. So, with that, we're back to item number 78, which is the cell of McDott Parcel X0260 dash EX2, Estrella Roadway Phase 2. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Vice Chairman?
Yes.
With all the information we've received, I move approval of item 78.
Thank you, Jack. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you Supervisor Galvin. We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Okay, under setting of hearings, planning and development, number 80, planning and zo, excuse me, planning and zoning cases. Under transportation, 81, patent easement abandonment, road file number PAB dash 0182. The Board will now consider items 80 and 81.
Mr. Vice Chair, I move to approve items 80 and 81.
Thank you Supervisor Galvin. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Under consent agenda, 82, donations, 83, duplicate warrants, 84, treasures collections and investment summary report, 85, tax abatements, 86, secured, unsecured tax rule corrections, 87, settlement resolution of property tax cases and claims. The Board will now consider items 82 through 87.
Mr. Vice Chair, I move approval of items 82 through 87.
Second.
Thank you, Jack, and thank you, Tom. I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Under flood control district, item 88, utility, oh, sorry, 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 sorry. Man, I'm getting, it's been too long. Maybe you guys should just make me chairman all the time. Just kidding, Bill. Okay, we will now recess as the Board of Supervisors and convene as the Flood Control District Board of Directors. Under Flood Control District, item 88, utility license agreement with APS, 89, IGA with U.S. Department of Agriculture, Nat, Nature Resources Conservation Service, and number 90, easement, row and relocation assistance documents. The Board will now consider items 88 through 90.
Mr. Vice Chair, I move to approve items 88 through 90.
Great, thank you.
Second.
Thank you, Jack. We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. We will now adjourn as the Flood Control District Board of Directors and reconvene as the Board of Supervisors. Number 91 is the public comment period. Madam Clerk, do you have anything to report regarding public comment email responses?
Chairman Supervisors, we received one email comment regarding legal class verification process, and that email was shared with all the board offices, and we do have Blue Crowley in person for public comment.
Okay. Mr., Mr. Crowley, I, I hope we ran this meeting fast enough, so you can get to the other one.
But I'm also gonna ask for twice the amount of time, because I do have some serious information I need to communicate to the Board.
No.
Yeah.
You have two minutes.
Okay.
But you can come back to the next one.
Well, some of it is time sensitive. What it is, is that I've been going to RPCA and MAG and y'all for a long time, and it's real important to me for the public comment, because it was under a federal reg that MAG had to get and dance and do, and I'm hoping for institutional knowledge, either from yourself or Steve. If you'll recall, back in the day, RPCA tried to eliminate public comment, and they got their hands slapped and said, hey, you can't do that, they have to be able to input and such. Well, guess what happened last week? They had a special meeting, and public comment was taken out, and when I tried to find out what was going on, I ran into, from advice from our attorney, that public comment didn't need to be in there, because it's not in the open meeting law, but as you know, and as Steve knows, because I believe that you were around when the last time we had to explain to RPCA that they do it according to what MAG has agreed to with the feds, which means that any part along the way, public gets to input when it's action. And since they were hiring their new CEO and such, they said, well, you can comment at our next meeting on that, well, it's after the fact. Now, the other part of it, with the light rail and the transit together as one unit, you'd think that they'd be multimodal. Well, with the new development that they have for the rail, there are five, not one, not two, not three, not four, but five bus routes that are gonna be crossing the rail, no stop. One of them's at 43rd Avenue. I wanted that stop, because when they were digging the freeway right away, they found that, they found turtles the size of Volkswagens prehistoric, and I wanted at that, stop some of that history to be dealt with. They don't even have it, so if they are gonna be multimodal, please, all five of those need to be dealt with and done with, and if you could, Steve, help me communicate with the RPCA that they need to do that meeting over again, and for whatever board, because they said it was the Board, there's 28 members of you. Well, who made that decision to say the public didn't need to be commenting?
Blue, thank you.
Thanks.
I appreciate it.
Like I said, I had to get the extra.
Very good, thank you. I gave you a little bit of extra time, because I haven't seen you for a long time, so I'll give you that. Then, it's nice to see you, truly. Okay, any, any, no further speakers' lips?
No other speakers.
Okay, thank you, then we will, we will move on to the supervisor's summary of current events, and also, our county manager, Joy, would you like to have something to say?
Chairman, members of the Board, I just wanted to let you know that we're very hopeful that we have held our last 8:30 COVID call this morning. As you'll remember, that started under your chairmanship on March 12th, 2020, and so it has been over two years that we've been having those COVID calls, and if you'll remember, we did them seven days a week with two board members present and our entire executive team for months and months and months. We're not declaring victory, but we do think that we have passed to a point where we can have, just, you know, keep you updated on COVID, but I, I've reflected on how unique that partnership is between our policy, you are policymakers, and the staff that allowed us, sometimes those calls lasted two and a half, three hours, and you all were there, your chiefs of staff were there, your deputies, and I really think that it was a unique experience amongst governments, that we were able to form that partnership, get your direction on those calls, and execute quickly when our community needed us the most, so I wanted to thank you and let you know that we're passing into another phase of our, our COVID. Thank you.
Jack, would you like to reflect on, on those words? I know you did plenty of them during the COVID.
I, I am just so proud of everything our county team did to, to try to mitigate this pandemic and get people back to work and back to a more normal lifestyle as quickly as possible. I think that we made a lot of tough decisions, we took a lot of heat at times, but I, I really feel like we had the expert team on what was going on from a, from a health standpoint. They were giving us very vital input at every turn of events, and I'm very proud of, of what they did for us and, and what they allowed us to do.
Thank you, Jack. Bill?
Yeah, I would, thank you. Mr. Chairman, I'm happy to call you Mr. Chairman, and by the way, you can, you, you can chair as often as you want, you're doing a great job. Yeah, I would just echo everything that has been said, and Joy, I appreciate your comments that, that this was a unique partnership between the elected Board and, and you and the, the, the rest of the people who run this county on a day-by-day basis. You know, hopefully, we'll never have to endure something like this, you know, literally life and death every day, but Joy, I felt like you and your team, public health, emergency management, everyone treated this every day like it was a matter of life and death, and, and continue to, but it is very encouraging that we're, we're reaching a point now in the pandemic where, you know, we, we don't have to have these meetings on a regular basis, and again, on behalf of all the people, literally, whose lives were saved because of the efforts of county employees, thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Tom, you never got to be chairman during a pandemic, and you should probably thank your lucky stars for that, and I'll just reflect and say, you know, it just seemed like so much information and so many things that we needed to make decisions on. It, it seemed like it was occurring on the weekends. I remember those Saturday and Sunday calls, and it's like, well, we need to do something immediately, and, and you, you guys would work together, get something up on the board agenda for, for Wednesday, or we'd call a formal session as, as fast as we could to respond, and I just thank all of the, the team, and, and almost all of you guys are still here, and what you lived through, what we all lived through together to help this county out, was an unbelievable experience, and one I'll, one I'll cherish, because we had a great team, and we still do, and I thank you all for that, because I do reflect, this is not, you guys don't treat this as a nine-to-five job. You guys were there at 8:30 in the morning, also on Saturdays and Sundays, trying to come up with some, some plans on the fly to, to really hopefully save people's lives, but at least keep people out of the hospital, so I thank you for that. So, thank you, Joy, for, for bringing that up. It's, it's, it's bittersweet, so. Jack?
Well, and I'll just add to that, when you passed the baton to me as chairman, you didn't feel that just dealing, continuing to deal with a pandemic was enough, you wanted me to also deal with a 500-year flood.
Yeah. Boy, that's, that's not even on the, what I think about anymore from all the trials and tribulations we've been through together, so.
But, again, what a great team. I, I, I've really appreciated all the support we've had and the way we work together on these issues.
Yeah.
So I'll add to that, some of the things that I've been involved in recently, I did attend a web meeting with Senator Kelly's office on congressionally-directed spending. Chairman Gates and I both attended the International State of the State with Governor Ducey as the keynote, and a lot of foreign dignitaries were at that event. It was really a, a very nice reception where we got to interact with a lot of those folks. I made a presentation at the Chandler Chamber of Commerce Policy Impact Statement, or Policy Impact Series, along with MAG, presentation on the extension of Prop 400, ADOT made a presentation on the status of the Broadway Curve Project, and, and I kind of filled in some of the blanks on, on how all that ties together regionally, and, and I also did make an announcement there, that because I felt that none of the candidates currently are making infrastructure a priority, and it needs to be with the growth we have in this county, that I was declaring my candidacy for governor, and I don't think anyone took it seriously, because it was April 1st. That's all I have, thanks.
I'd say you'd make a great governor, so, but too late, you can't turn any petition signatures, we all know that that time has passed, so, Jack, maybe in your future.
And my daughter, who lives in Florida, immediately texted me and said, please assure me that's a joke.
I wouldn't blame her one bit. I will go to Steve Gallardo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and real quickly, just want to go back to Joy, great comments, and, you know, the whole pandemic period was a challenging time for everyone. I've always said, there are times where, there are issues where there's more important than any reelection, you just do what you need to do, regardless of what people think. You just do it, you do it for the betterment of the community at large, you do it for the betterment of, of, of everybody. We made some tough decisions, everything from the mask mandate to closing down our parks, these were decisions that I know many were under a lot of pressure, but I think they were the right decisions. We did it not for political reasons, we did it because it was the right thing to do. As Chairman Gates said, it was a life and death situation, and couldn't be more proud to be part of the Board, part of the county, the great staff that came together every morning to make tough decisions. There was no playbook. Every jurisdiction was dealing with this pandemic across the country, from school districts, the cities and towns, to, to, to our counties, everyone was having to deal with, and everyone did the right thing. I know there were some out there that wanted to play politics, they were, they were more worried about their reelection. Well, I'm glad to say that we put the pandemic, public health, the safety, the lives of our citizens, the people of Maricopa County first and foremost. Those were tough decisions, but we did the right thing, and I couldn't be more proud of this Board, I couldn't be more proud of Joy and her entire team and everyone that was involved. I couldn't be more proud of Joy and her entire team and everyone that was involved. Everyone from our public health experts, having to watch what the CDC was doing, having to watch what the governor was doing, having to watch what some of our municipalities were doing and trying to just do what was right. Put the politics to the side and do the right thing. And that's exactly what Maricopa County did. And I couldn't be more proud. So thank you, Joy, and everyone for their involvement and their participation. It's been a challenging last couple of years, but again, we did the right thing when it came to dealing with the pandemic. On the other note, Mr. Chairman, we have some very good news out in the West Valley. I was able to participate with a ribbon-cutting ceremony for HelloFresh, has the largest distribution center out here, right in Maricopa County, almost 400 or over 450,000 square feet. They have 1,200 workers right now preparing some of their meals and distributing them throughout the entire nation, mostly in the west, or mostly in the western region of the country. But it was amazing. I was familiar with HelloFresh. I haven't used their product, and not yet, but I will. But I was amazed on, on the facilities that they have right out here in the West Valley. I know they have another one coming up in Goodyear. I believe that's going to have around 800 or so new jobs. So they'll have another facility out in Goodyear. But the one facility right in District 5 is the largest one. Had a great ribbon-cutting ceremony with the mayor of Phoenix, the governor's office. Everyone was there. It was just, it was just a great event, a great facility. I walked in there, and it was, it was, this is the funny part. I walked in there, and they had these big green jackets. They looked like ski jackets. And they were giving it to, you know, everyone that was going to be part of this ribbon-cutting. Must have been like 30 of us. And I said, well, I don't need a jacket. I'm okay. They said, oh, it's real cold in there, inside the facility. It's real cold. I said, no, I'm fine. I have, you know, I have my sports coat on. I'm, I'm, I'm good. I don't need it. Man, I walked in there, and it was like, it was like under 30 degrees. It was freezing. And these hard-working employees are there with gloves and jackets, and they're putting together these food boxes, which was, which was amazing. But I ended up putting on one of the, the, the green jackets and wore them. You definitely need it. It just shows you the atmosphere, the environment that they're having to work in in order to prepare, prepare these meals. These meals will go out to families. As we all know, families are busy 24/7. Mom and dad come home from, from, from work after a long day. They're tired, and HelloFresh provides them a meal that they can give to their families that is healthy, fresh vegetables. So it's a great product that they put together. So it was, it was a great experience. Congratulations HelloFresh for coming to Maricopa County. I look forward to seeing what they create out in Goodyear in the next year or two. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you Supervisor Gallardo. Supervisor Galvin?
Thank you, Mr. Hickman. Just in District 2 news, I just want to highlight an organization that I recently met with and was very impressed by, which is Copa Health, located in Mesa. Private nonprofit corporation dedicated to changing the lives of those with developmental, intellectual, or behavioral challenges. And these guys do amazing work. Just incredible stuff. It's a thankless job, always goes, most of the time, unacknowledged. So I want to highlight their contributions to helping towards mental health, employment-related services, day programs, residential services, and integrated health. And I look forward to continuing to learn more about Copa Health and meeting with the folks that they do. And then for the county manager, Ms. Rich, thank you very much for your comments this morning and update regarding the COVID calls and how, yes, it is bittersweet that we don't have COVID calls, but obviously you and the public health departments of all would acknowledge that COVID is still real and happening. And we definitely want members of the public to remain vigilant and to be careful. And I was just reading the news yesterday that in Shanghai, there are 17,000 new cases due to this BA2 variant. So from our perspective of the county, for anyone who's listening and paying attention, COVID is still real. It's still happening, and all of us here at the county take it very serious. Yet, I have no doubt that the Maricopa County Health Department is actively engaged in monitoring the situation, not only in China, but in Europe as well. And I'm confident they will continue to keep us appraised and updated. And if folks out there can continue to remain vigilant and safe, it'll only make the jobs everywhere here that much easier because they work hard, as Mr. Hickman pointed out, 24/7. So I appreciate everything you do. I'm very proud to be working with you now after everything you've done successfully. But just, folks, just be aware about this BA2, and I'm very curious to see if there's any effect here in the near future. So we should always be cognizant that anything can change at a quick moment's notice. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. And before I turn the last word over to our chairman, I just thought I'd mention real quickly, I was happy to join Supervisor Galvin at the Power Breakfast at Brophy today. And there was, there was words by General Manager of the Diamondbacks, Mike Hazen, whose son plays on my son's baseball team. And he gave a great speech about adversity and hope, and I thought it was powerful, very powerful actually, about where adversity and hope, he didn't really juxtapose it against the Diamondbacks, but he really did within his own family, with his wife that is suffering through brain cancer. So, and, and how much the community has rallied around him. They gave him hope. And then also, there was a brief speech by a student there that I remember talking, I went and spoke to a couple of classes at Brophy in a little leadership program. And I remember this kid sitting in the front row, and I asked him where they were all going to college, and this kid tells me Notre Dame. And I thought, wow. I said, well, what you actually could do is just go to modeling school. You're, you are a good-looking young man, so maybe you should just make your mint there. And he goes, maybe, maybe later. Then he got up today, I didn't know who he was. Then he got up today, gave a speech, full ride scholarship to Notre Dame on an athletics scholarship. He's, I guess he's an All-America. His name's Ben. And what was fascinating was through the pandemic, he, his dad, who played in the NFL, told him to switch schools and, because he'd get some playing time, because it didn't look like Brophy was going to play. And he just said, he did, for a day. And he, he found out that he was learning a lot more of life at the school and team and family at his old school than what he was learning or was ever going to learn at the new school. So he came back to Brophy, was willing to sit out a year with all those recruiters staring, and came back to that. So truly, truly important words from the next generation. So with that, Chairman Gates?
Well, thank you so much, Supervisor Hickman, again, for holding down the fort. You did a great job, and far better than what people have become accustomed to in 2022. So thank you so much for that. The only thing that I wanted to mention as well is that we will be having the hour of District 3 Farm City Breakfast is going to be next Wednesday, April 13th, and that is going to be from 8:00 to 10:00 a.m. at Arizona Wholesale Nursery. So I hope that everybody can come out and join us. Thanks so much.
That is your last statement. Do you want to, do you want to ask for adjournment, or are you just going to let me get this down myself? Forget it. Oh, I had my mic off. He didn't hear that. Okay, Bill, I asked you to adjourn, and you just did. Thanks.
Thank you.